We'll call to order, City Council Special Budget Work Session, Tuesday, May tenth, two thousand and twenty-two. We'll begin with roll call.
Councilmember Babcock? Councilmember Brookover?
Here.
Councilmember Watson?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Greg?
Here.
Mayor Bacon?
Present. Next, I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
For a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Communication from council. Councilperson Brookover?
No, thank you.
Councilperson Watson?
No, thanks.
Mayor Pro Tem Greg?
Nothing at this time.
Nothing at this time. Onto item four point one, Discussion of Local Budget Finance Authority and Review of Fiscal Year Two Thousand and Twenty-three Budget.
Greetings. Thank you, Mayor, and hello, Mayor and Council. So today, just kind of give you a brief overview of the LDFA, the budget, and then the TIF plan extension request. We did discuss this at length in January and be happy to answer any questions at the end, but I just wanted to give you a brief overview here. There is a presentation in your packet. I'm not going to go through the whole thing, but if you ask some questions and it gets to that, we can pull up some of the slides. So tonight, there's the two main topics, just the budget for fiscal year twenty-three, which, as you'll recall, needs to be approved by both cities prior to being approved by the LDFA. It's been preliminary preliminarily approved and is in front of you tonight for discussion. It would be approved as part of your packet for May twenty-fourth. Also, we have the TIF extension request. So in terms of the budget, it's estimated that about four hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars will go to the LDFA. The goal of using the resources that now are available and have not really previously been available until the last couple of years is really to enhance the programs and services to support technology and entrepreneurship in the smart zone and business attraction efforts. When we last talked, the board had moved to create a position. We now are finalizing the person who will sit in that role and hope that they will actually begin yet in May. And they will lead the effort to utilize the programs and services line item of this budget and to fill the gaps in coordination with all of the partners that are part of the LDFA. In terms of the TIF plan extension, again, it is a request to extend, essentially staying the course for five years. There is a link to the plan itself in your packet. As part of tonight's business agenda, there is on the consent agenda, the resolution to set a public hearing to discuss that on the twenty-fourth of May. And as part of that, there are two other documents that are germane to the TIF plan extension that will be considered by the council as well. They are still being finalized, but they are the operating agreement, which essentially details the governance and operations of the partnership between all of the various partners. It also includes a concept of a ten percent rising tides fund, really to focus some of the effort on the smart zone as a whole, and it clarifies the board appointments from the partners, the various partners. Also, as part of that consideration will be the Smart Zone Agreement, and this is a document that really specifies how the LDFA and Smart Zone function under Public Act Fifty-seven. So that is the end of my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. Again, you have an item to set a public hearing as part of your next business meeting, and we will discuss this more in detail as you take this consideration on May twenty-fourth for both the tax increment financing plan as well as the budget. Thank you.
Questions?
Thank you. I think now we're going to turn it over to Nicole McPherson.
Thanks, Tom. I will also give a very brief overview of the DPW budget. Just kidding. You'll be here for a while. I'm going to get comfortable. All right. Well, good evening, Council. Thank you. I'm here to present the fiscal year twenty-three budget for the enterprise and special revenue funds. For DPW, as a reminder, I was here earlier this year and did discuss the general fund components of the DPW budget. And, you know, with that, a lot of the general funds are allocated into these enterprise and special revenue funds. So with me tonight, I have our acting deputy director Ron Lacos, acting water resource recovery facility superintendent Todd Nichols, and our environmental specialist Cliff Walls. Along with this staff, I would just like to acknowledge our whole DPW team for their continued service to this community. It's been, it's, you know, all of these years are a little challenging, and we've been able to really put forth a great effort towards service. For this budget that we are kind of going over tonight, you know, it's about fifty-six million dollars affiliated with the DPW special revenue and enterprise funds. And about half of, over half of this, about twenty-nine million dollars of that fund is affiliated with capital improvement projects or capital outlay. So it shows that we are putting forth a lot of effort towards renewing our system. So this slide just goes over the agenda. You know, we're going to do a little department overview, go over our funds of the major and local streets, solid waste management, water and sewer rates, sewage disposal fund, water system supply fund, and then we're going to go over our CIP there at the end. That is kind of more the map, which will will help as we're going through the slides of the major and local and the water and sewer projects. You'll see them better as we actually hit that capital improvement slide at the end. So going over our organizational chart, so we have about seventy-seven, well, not about, we have seventy-seven full-time employees within DPW. We are continuously looking for staff to fill our vacancies. It's pretty, it's been a pretty tough market lately for, you know, a lot of the tech services, whether it's engineering or operations or maintenance staff at our water resource recovery facility are in high demand. So it's hard to find the qualified people that we want to bring onboard to be able to serve our community. You know, for example, we've been looking for a master electrician for about five years, maybe, and we just don't see some of those qualified candidates coming to our department. We also have a lot of new staff. We've had a lot of turnover within our DPW pool, within our public service employees, and, you know, some of that comes with a little less experience. So, you know, we are mentoring our staff to be able to serve our city the way that our more experienced staff are. We also do get some summer temp help. You know, we typically hire about six staff over the summer to be able to help. And, you know, there are currently about six vacant positions, four of them at our water resource recovery facility and some in engineering. So the first fund that we're going to look at is major street fund. We maintain twenty, over twenty-five miles of streets, nine miles of M-dot trunk lines, three bridges, and fifty-one signals. You know, we're going to see a lot of these key services throughout the different funds. You know, a lot of them are the same things, especially as we're hitting here with the major and the local street funds, because we do plowing and salting, pot hauling, skip paving, crack sealing. We maintain the trees along the streets. We do sweeping. Obviously, we do engineering design and inspection and asset management, sign maintenance, traffic control, signal or payment markings. We maintain our street leaf program. You know, we maintain the street drainage. And, you know, for the major streets, we do the M-dot trunk line maintenance. For fiscal year twenty-three, our STP project, which is an M-dot grant project, to where we pay twenty percent and M-dot pays eighty percent, these are all good deals, is Coolidge Road resurfacing. That's from Saginaw to Lake Lansing. As part of this project, we are also installing two bike lanes. So since we're not allowed to say road diet, we say lane expansion, maybe? It will go from a four to, four to three lanes of vehicular traffic and add two bike lanes on that. We're also submitted a bridge application for a deck replacement on the Harrison Road Bridge. We submitted that to the state and are hoping to receive funding. We are in a continual maintenance component on that bridge to where there are a fair amount of, we'll just say, minor holes at this point. We, yes?
Obviously, that's a materials question, that kind of thing. Is there, are there alternative or possible different material solutions for those high maintenance, things like the bridge and that kind of thing? This is something I don't know, but is there options to, things different?
Not necessarily. Typically, it would be a concrete and deck replacement. So maintaining the bridge, you know, we do like a, what I would say AMARH, asphalt type solution. But, you know, when there's a hole, sometimes it will go all the way through. It's not the best solution. So in some of the more critical distressed areas of the bridge, we are working with a consulting firm to be able to provide us with a right fix for the interim until we can determine if we have funding for that. So it's typically concrete.
Thank you.
Yep. You know, we also do continual preventative maintenance throughout our streets. You know, we crack seal or do skip paving of about five miles on our major streets. I kind of indicated the non-motorized investment. We're always looking at ways to incorporate that. We're actually, it's a requirement for some of our major street funding that we have to put in ten percent of a non-motorized investment, and that is, you know, bike lanes, sidewalks, et cetera, you know, ADA ramps, et cetera. We're also looking at our non-motorized transportation plan. We're scheduled to update that in the fall. The Transportation Commission is looking at that now. And we are continuing our planning with the Safe Routes to School major infrastructure program. So these are the fund slides that you may or may not be able to see from where you are, so I did pass out packets for that as well. But this is just our five-year forecast. You're going to see these on every fund as we go through this presentation. The first column is your fiscal year twenty-two year in estimate, followed by fiscal year twenty-three allocations. The cell that's highlighted in blue is the request for our fiscal year twenty-three budget. You know, so this is, this is kind of the litmus test. This is our cash flow. This is what we want to do with our projects over the next five years. You know, this really shows us, you know, are we doing the right things? Are we spending too much? Are we spending not enough money for these, for these streets and these investments as we move forward? So I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this. It's a lot of numbers, and you don't need me to read all of these numbers to you. If you get to the end, the undesignedated fund balance at the end of the year, we try, you know, we don't really want to go below fifteen percent. Obviously, you can see in some of the outer years, we might hit that, that area, but that's five years away. And, you know, we're really looking at that as a, as a way to budget and move things around if we have to.
Please remind us, where does this money come from?
I'm sorry. So our major street and our local street funds come from, we get Act Fifty-One funding from the state and a gas tax.
Okay. And is there any of our money in there, or is that all coming through those sources?
For all the major street, it's coming from those sources.
Yeah, you cut out.
It's coming from those sources.
Okay. So, so when you're requesting the available, when you're talking about the available fund balance, projecting out to fiscal year twenty-seven, you're assuming no more funds coming from those sources?
No, it's just an allocation of, I mean, we're still continuing to receive those funds. It's just how much we're spending from now until then. So we may have to adjust what we're investing in various roads. Like, maybe we don't do a section and then we're able to.
But these funds would replenish during this five-year, or, excuse me, this five-year period?
Yeah, we continually get those funds each year.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So as we go over to the local street fund, again, as you can see with our key services, you're going to see a lot of the same information. You know, we maintain more local streets. We have twenty, or, I'm sorry, sixty-two point one miles of local streets. You know, we still do the plowing. We do a little bit more thoughtful applications of our salt. We, through our local streets, we don't salt every local street that we have throughout these winter events, but we look at intersections and places with hills and make sure that those get taken care of. So again, you see the same key services, as I mentioned before, on the local street fund. You know, some of our key operational data, you know, we plowed and salted, you know, the major streets twenty-seven times, and we plowed eighteen of the twenty-seven storms for the local streets. We used twenty-four hundred tons of salt. That's a lot of salt. Applied twenty-one thousand seven hundred and eighty gallons of brine and collected four thousand one hundred and seventy-five compacted cubic yards of leaves. Again, that's a lot of leaves. So as we, as we go into the, into the local funds a little bit, again, these are also from the Act Fifty-One revenue that we get from the state. And as part of that state funding, they allow for twenty-five percent of the major funds to be transferred into the local street fund. So that does help our local street fund maintain that balance, and you'll see that on the next slide. We are also looking at our local street funds to include infrastructure. So we, you know, we don't want to pave a street and then come back and have to replace the water main the next year. We work with our staff to be able to figure out where our needs are, you know, with water main breaks and such over the course of, you know, the past year. Where's, where's the need? Where do we need to go? So we have been tying our local street resurfacing with our infrastructure investment and infrastructure upgrades. So our projects for this year. So you'll see, it's not a mistake that there is fiscal year twenty-one and twenty-two indicated there before the projects, because we are still catching up from COVID. We delayed a fair amount of projects through COVID and actually through staffing that we weren't able to be able to get everything done over the past couple of years. So we have Stoddard Avenue from Grand River to Bercham, Melrose Avenue from Haguenborn to Timber Lane, and Berkshire Lane and Kings Court, those are off Alton and Bercham. So those were fiscal year twenty-one projects that we are now planning to do in fiscal year twenty-three. We also have a fiscal year twenty-two project and kind of the White Hills Drive neighborhood. So White Hills Drive from Abbott to Alton and then the streets there to the north of that to Saginaw. Now, all, I guess, four of these areas, we are incorporating water replacement as well as street replacement in that. And then, again, with internal maintenance that we do and preventative maintenance with skip paving and crack sealing, we get about eight miles a year for, for that. So again, here, we'll have our five-year forecast. You can see our transfer from major street fund is the, the line item in red, and it again shows, you know, we have a pretty large balance, I mean, fund balance, and this would allow us to pivot. And maybe there is a road that we weren't aware of or something that we want to add to our local paving program. This allows us to be able to include that, you know, at a later date if we, if we feel that that's a necessary way for us to go. This is our Pacer map. Typically, our Pacer map shows us really good things, that we're doing all the right things. We're moving in the right direction. And in this case, on our major streets, it's showing just that. It's showing a decrease in, it's showing a decrease in our good, but it's also showing a decrease in our poor streets and an increase in that fair area. On our local streets, we kind of have a decrease in our fair and good rated streets and an increase in our poor streets. Well, there's a couple of different reasons for this, or possible reasons for this. We've had three years. We missed a year from COVID in doing the Pacer evaluations. We also have new staff evaluating the streets. So if you're, if you're out there evaluating streets, you have to take into account, okay, this street might have one section that has maybe allegraider cracking. You have to rate that entire section of road, you know, as a three, you know, which is in that poor, poor category, or a four, to where maybe the rest of the road is fine. There could be a utility cut in one area, and that would, you know, essentially turn the whole road into a poor rating. So, you know, with our new staff, I shouldn't say new staff, new people onboard evaluating, you know, really, if you're being conservative, it's going to give a, it's going to reflect on the more poor ratings than it is going to be good, because you're going to say, okay, I see five cracks here. I'm going to put it in, you know, this category. So it's something to keep in mind as we move forward. You know, we have to keep in mind that Pacer is a surface distress rating. It's not really a ride quality rating. So there could be, you know, distress in one area. A road could stay a three or a four on a local road for many years. It may not deteriorate as, as fast as maybe a major road with the, with more and more traffic. So we're going to redo these again here in twenty-two, probably in the fall, and we'll see where we end up. Not counted here is stuff that's not yet completed this year. We have about two miles of local roads and three miles of major roads that are yet to be completed this year. But obviously, we don't count those as being good until we get to that point, until they're completed. Those are kind of the areas that are circled there on the map that kind of blend in with all of the other red ratings. So my apologies for my color choice. But also, as I look at the poor areas there, most of them, most, about ninety percent of that, the area that falls into the poor on our local streets, fall within that three or four rating. So we're not talking the full reconstruction. We can still capture some of the life of that road and do what I would call a milling and resurfacing instead of a full reconstruction. But again, as I said earlier, a lot of those local roads were tying with utility projects. But again, as I said earlier, a lot of those local roads were tying with utility projects. So they're going to be fully redone anyway. Any other questions on road and then we're going to switch to solid waste management fund? Okay. Solid Waste Management Fund, obviously, people know our key services, weekly trash collection, biweekly recycling collection, bulk collection, seasonal fee-based yard collection, no-fee yard waste collection days, recycling and styrofoam drop-off center. We have event coordination. We do a lot with move-in and move-out support, regional collaboration. We monitor the Bercham landfill and obviously any storm debris. We are out there making sure that that gets collected and disposed of. So some key operational data for our yard waste, we collected 2,000 compacted yards last year of just yard waste. So when you look at the correlation between fee-based yard waste and no-fee days, we collected 60% of that on our no-fee yard waste and then the remaining was on the fee-based yard waste. So we do get a lot on the days and we're only doing four no-fee yard waste collection days and we're collecting 60% of that. So it's a lot for us to do in those days. So annually, we recycle about 1,700 tons of material through curbside collection, DPW drop-offs facility and the municipal buildings. Other key updates are M-TARA, the Material Recovery Facility has been operational for over a year. This is great news that all of our recycling materials process locally. You know, their Eagle has funded a grant for an educational center there. Lansing is taking the lead on this one and, you know, processing the funds for that. But, you know, so this grant is going to provide a great regional area for people to come with and learn about recycling. So this is good for everyone in the area. They're also expanding some of the material we can take. So, you know, we can now, you know, accept, you know, Big B and Starbucks cups, who are a lot of other facilities don't. So they're continuing to expand, continuing to look at ways that they can update their facility as well. We continue with the online sales of yard waste and bulk stickers as well. So for our projects, obviously, we continue with the Bercham landfill monitoring. That's something that's been going on for a while and we will continue with that. And with that, we'll continue with our intergovernmental agreement with the City of Lansing for the recycling and processing. We are always continuing to look at grant opportunities. We have submitted a grant to Eagle to install some compactors at the DPW facility for the recycling. This is going to achieve a tenfold reduction in the transportation needs. And this would also include a foam densifier. As, you know, we obtain and work with DART for all of our styrofoam recycling. You know, styrofoam is not small. You know, it's very big and this would really, I mean, it kind of says it all in the name. It's densified. So it brings it down to a more manageable material that can actually be sold. So this is a yet-to-be-determined type thing. You know, we're also working with a recycling partnership and they're fully funding a pilot to install material cameras on our recycling truck to track our recycling contamination. So this is going to help us with education. It's going to help us with just trying to figure out our contamination rate and how we can make that better. I believe in the past, you know, we've kind of talked about composting facility. There is a study that's being done right now that's been funded by Eagle. Lansing's again taking the lead on that and Public Sector Consultants is doing this study. And it's just a market rate study to determine the feasibility of this within the region. Five-year forecast here for the solid waste. Again, you know, we're doing pretty good, you know, with our funds and as we continue. This means that our millage rate is set well. So not much really to add on this. You know, we go, you know, we get our funds from the millage and, you know, all of our expenditures are through our landfill and recycling and ability to serve the community.
What is the recycling expenditure? What does that consist of?
The recycling expenditure is the cost to be able to pick up the recycling as well as to get it processed.
Okay, so we're paying a third party to process it?
We are, we have an agreement with M-TARA, which is the Material Resource Facility. There are components to it that we pay and there's components that we get paid.
And to your knowledge, when was the last time we looked at that? I assume it's a contract of some kind?
It's a contract. This facility is only a year old, so it's a very new agreement.
And this is a governmental facility with other governments?
Correct, with Lansing, City of Lansing.
Okay. At any time in the last five years, have we explored the possibility of having a private company do the recycling?
Not that I'm aware of.
And so are we paying them based on the market rates of the materials they bring in?
Essentially, well, they pay us a little bit for the market rate of the materials that we give to them. But we have a set rate of what we have to bring to them. And I might look to Cliff Walls, our environmental specialist. He might have a better.
I guess my question is this. I mean, so my understanding is that in the last five or six years, most municipalities have had to start to pay to have the recycles handled as opposed to getting money back from recycling? Do you know?
With the arrival of M-TARA into the region, there has been a lot of efficiencies gained. We're not having to ship it quite as far. And so just to clarify, that M-TARA is a private entity, but we have an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Lansing. And so we pay through the City of Lansing. But while recycling markets have been in flux in the last five, six years or so, we're getting pretty high rebates on our materials. So we do pay a processing fee, but anywhere between almost, I think, 70 to 85% of that cost is returned to us in rebates, which is all based on the existing commodity markets for aluminum and it's quarterly set, I believe, but those are.
So the net loss or the net expense to the city for doing the recycling right now is ballpark 30%?
Off the top of my head, I would say, when I get the bills, they appear to be roughly in that, if it's a $20,000 monthly processing fee, we're sometimes getting anywhere between $15,000 and $17,000 back in rebates. But again, those are variable depending on commodity markets. But that's pretty new. You know, I've been here five months, but it seems to be pretty high value.
Okay. And so when M-TARA processes the stuff, let's just take an example of styrofoam. So, which they process, correct?
They do not. DART container is our provider for that.
Okay. Are we paying DART container to process the styrofoam?
No, they provide this throughout the country, I believe more as a goodwill because they are the largest producer of materials.
So that's not one of the recycling expenses that's listed here?
I would think that it's the.
Collection and staffing.
Staff. Well, I understand that. I'm talking about the commodity market right now. So, I mean, I'm sure many people in this room have read the same articles I have. So my understanding is that to the extent we were able to dump all this stuff on China five, seven years ago, we can't do that anymore. So I guess my question is, where, when the people of City of East Lansing recycle and M-TARA processes it, where does it then go?
That, I went to a tour there recently and we asked the same question and there's not a consistent answer. It's all based on the supply chain or the buyers available. Some are local buyers for using material as industrial feedstock. Some of it presumably goes across state, national borders. But there's not a, to my knowledge, a consistent downstream purchaser of their materials. It's all depending on variations in the market and which buyers are there that we, essentially.
And offhand, I don't expect you to know this answer. Do you know whether we have the right under the existing contract with M-TARA to find out for them on a monthly basis exactly where they're marketing the recyclables? If you don't know, that's fine, but I'd like to know the answer to that question before we pass the budget, please. Thank you.
Any other questions on solid waste? We will now turn it over, or we'll now continue on with water and sewer. So this is a graphic that has been used in other, in past presentations. I really do like this graphic because it just hits on the age of our, age of our system, age of our water and our sanitary combined sewer system. A lot of this, you know, a large portion of our system was installed in, you know, the 1920s. If we think of a water sewer design life, we're at that 75 to 100 years. It's close to where we are right now. You know, so this, this really just shows why we need to continue to invest in our water and our sewer kind of replacement and renewal as we continue through this, so. So water and sewer rates. So, you know, we are starting, or maybe I should say continuing, that perpetual process of system renewal. You know, this is funded through user charge to be able to rehabilitate, replace, you know, that first generation underground infrastructure, you know, that you saw with that last slide. You know, and we like to coordinate a lot of this with street improvements. Obviously, the challenge is affordability. You know, the emergent issues, you know, take resources away from the renewal. You know, we're being hit with the lead and copper component from the state. So we have to put money towards that, which may take away from our continued renewal of maybe a section of water main replacement. You know, we're always looking at ways. We're looking at federal funding to be able to redo that service or supplement our existing funds to make improvements to critical infrastructure. You know, from what we've heard with all of this funding that's being, you know, generated and given to the state to be able to give to communities, most of that's going to come through, you know, state revolving loans. You know, we currently use state revolving loans for our upgrades at the Water Resource Recovery Facility. We're looking at utilizing some of them for drinking water, which could help with the renewal and, or with our compliance with our lead and copper rule. So, you know, these are, we don't know yet. You know, I feel like everybody wants to know exactly how we're going to get those funds. We don't know. What we've heard is they're going to follow the same mechanisms that are there right now, indicating the state revolving funds, revolving funds or revolving loans. And with that, they may take, they may look at these loans and say, hey, we're going to provide debt forgiveness to maybe a disadvantaged community or people who are doing lead and copper or people who have contaminant issues. So of those three examples that I said, we would only meet one of them, which is the lead and copper component. You know, with the rates, you know, we're all, you know, it's really hard to grasp what the water and sewer rates are with every community around us. People do them differently. They calculate them differently. There's commodity rates on some and not on others. So this was a graph that was, you know, pulled from before. I entered our current fiscal year 23 rates for water and sewer. And, you know, we're still right in the middle of the range, you know, from the surrounding communities, from their rates from, you know, two years ago at this point. So as we continue to talk about rates, you know, we have the user charge that supports the maintenance operation and capital upgrade of the utility. The rates are based on a rate model that was adopted in 2006 and it generates the connection fees and quarterly billing as part of the three parts with the administrative readiness to serve and commodity charges. So, you know, we are, as everybody knows, still billing in the quarterly function. And, you know, with our relook at our water meters and the ability to replace those and do monthly charges, you know, that is going to help, you know, customers to be able to see kind of where their utilities are going to be coming in on a monthly basis. The charts there just compare the fiscal year 22 rates to the fiscal year 23 rates. If you compare these, you know, average bills, we're looking at that 15,000 gallons per quarter, per three months. So the increase would approximately be $8 over the three months or, you know, two and a third or 2.67 per month. My slides were backwards on my printout, so we're going to go to the Sewage Disposal System Fund. So our key services for sewage disposal, our WRF, our Water Resource Recovery Facility Operations and Maintenance, one of our biggest assets within the city. We have our collection systems, operation and maintenance, 79 miles of sanitary sewer, 44 miles of combined sewer, three pump stations and one CSL retention treatment basin. We have our customer service and billing. Similarly to how we had a lot of the same services or key services between local and majors, we'll have a lot of key services between our water and sewers, sewer funds as well, with customer service and billing, emergency repairs, sewer televising, mist dig, design engineering and inspection, construction management, asset management. And, you know, for the sewer, you know, the NPDs compliance, National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, compliance with the state. Some of the key operational data at our Water Resource Recovery Facility, we treated 3.478 billion, billion with a B, gallons of sewage this past year. And we've cleaned over 20 miles of sewer and we cleaned, you know, cleaned over 300 catch basins. Some of that is a little on the lower side, but we've had a lot of staff turnover and, you know, a lot of competing needs, you know, throughout our department. So we're just continuing to do it and it's something that is a great service. Key updates, our capital connection charges did increase 5%. You'll see the same number on the water side as well. So we have our projects. We're continuing with our aeration and clarifier improvements project at the WRF. This is a $30 million project that's going to replace our aeration system and add clarifiers at the WRF. I have a little bit more about that later. Our next phase of our SRF funding that we're going to be looking at is the design of an administration building. And we have some sewer projects as well with that, that could offer some sewer separation. With admin building, we're also looking at, it would be kind of a complete reset, which would include the lab facilities as well. We have street sewer project repairs and sewer lining that we continue to do every year with our various street projects. And we have as-needed sewer lining contracts, so we can, we can line the sewers as we look at them. Because we televise every sewer prior to doing a road project. So if there's any failures, we can make sure to repair that before we pave the road. We're also going to look at our Coleman Road Pump Station and do some improvements there. That was probably over 20 years old, so it's time to relook at that as well. And then the sewer, because we bill our sewer rates based on the meters, will have a component in the meter reading upgrade. So again, we're going to go to that five-year forecast that lots of numbers sheet that you're going to see there. And, you know, it's kind of broken down for our outlays for the collection system, pump station and Water Resource Recovery Facility, with our Water Resource Recovery Facility obviously being the largest of those. Going to continue with our water fund. Yeah. So key reminder. So key, key reminder that our Water Resource Recovery Facility is shared with MSU and Meridian Township. MSU pays 40%, Meridian Township pays 33 and a third, and we pay 26.7% of the capital improvements at the Water Resource Recovery Facility. For the water fund, again, for those key services, we operate and maintain 130 miles of water mains, over 8,000 meters, three water towers and one ground storage tank. We do meter reading, we do, and repair. Again, the same things with the customer service and billing. We have tower maintenance, emergency repairs, mist digs, taps and connections for new developments that come in or new residential properties. Design engineering inspections and asset management. We look at the water quality and take part and, and look at the cross connection inspections. So for our water, we get our water from the East Lansing Meridian Water Sewer Authority. That plant was built in the 60s, in the 70s, I think. So, you know, with that, they're, they're, they need to do the same thing that we're doing. They need to provide upgrades to their, to their plant. So they are starting that upgrade, they're utilizing the drinking water state revolving fund, and we are part of that with Meridian Township. And we are, we are provided, we are incorporating that debt service into our, into our, our budget. Because, you know, their upgrades are going to provide expanded capacity and it's, it's, it's needed. So again, as I mentioned earlier, you know, for those key updates, we have our capital connection charges at 5%. You know, we have that increase in that East Lansing Meridian Water Authority debt service payment. And that increased regulatory requirement for the lead and copper rule. So we also are required to inventory our water lines are, throughout the community. So, you know, we need to complete our full inventory of all of our water services by 2025. So we do, you know, about 400 a year at about $100,000. So we are continuing with our lead and copper rule, our service line replacement. We do get about 40 a year. We like to pair those with our, with our projects. So as we're going out there and replacing a water main, we'll look closer at all the houses, you know, within those residential areas to be able to do the replacement at the same time. Those replacements vary per house, every house is different. So they could be four to $8,000 per service replacement, and that's a cost borne on the city. These projects are very similar to the local street project, as I said, because we tie those things together. We have Melrose, Berkshire, King, Stoddard in the White Hills area. And then, you know, that water meter pilot is going to be continuing, and we're going to look at that closer. Just a little update on our lead and copper. In fiscal year 22, we had, we replaced 33 services. We looked at 369 for our inventory, so we confirmed that material. 29 of that were considered galvanizer lead on the private side, 27 on the East Lansing side, and seven of these were, were, were both sides. So that's kind of included in those, in those numbers. Again, this is a five-year forecast for our water fund. And, you know, we can see as we get out to that fiscal year 26 area that, you know, we're getting a little lower on some of our available cash at the, at the end of the year. We're, we're doing some pretty big projects or planning on doing some pretty big projects in that fiscal year 25, 24 and 25, and even into 26, to where we want to look at adding a water tower down on the Ivanhoe neighborhood. And we want to do, you know, more water, water main replacement. So we'll continue to keep, keep track on that and look at it and adjust as necessary. Okay, so this is the fiscal year 23 capital improvements map. These are projects that we've talked about either in this meeting or as in the CEDBG, we talked, spoke about that in the last meeting. So we have the White Hills neighborhood there in the upper left. We have King and Berkshire. Again, these are street and water projects included with Stoddard Avenue from Bercham to Grand River. The Coolidge is the STP project that we're looking for, looking at from Lake Lansing to Saginaw and Melrose from Hagadore into, to the east end there. You know, some of the challenges that we're going to face with our capital improvement project is the increasing material costs and supply delays. You know, currently for water main pipe, we're at about six to eight month delay. You know, we're looking at a project now that we might not, that we've bid out, but we might not be able to fully build this year, you know. So it, it, it's real, and, you know, this just means we need to look at things. We need to get things designed earlier, we need to get things out to bid earlier so we can kind of take that schedule into mind when we're planning these projects for these specific fiscal years. And, you know, we're still catching up. As you saw before, we're still catching up from the projects that we delayed due to COVID. So this is the clarifier and aeration improvements project, just a couple. The picture at the bottom right is, I, I had staff and our consultants send me a bunch of cool pictures. I don't know why, but I love that picture. I mean, this is one of the new clarifiers. You know, you can also see all of the pilings that had to be put in there to be able to make sure that that does not move once it's actually fully installed. So this is, again, the upgrades and expansion to the existing primary and secondary treatment facilities. Those were conducted, constructed in the 60s and 70s. We're going to rehabilitate both the north and south primary clarifiers and the aeration system is going to be made more efficient.
So what a clarifier and an aeration is, what does it actually do, please?
You're up, Todd. I'm, I'm going to bring our acting superintendent.
You're going to bring up the clarifier, aeration guy?
Yeah, I'm going to bring the clarifier and aeration guy, so you can go right up to the mic. Yeah, sure. And you can bring him through the treatment process there, Todd.
Testing, okay. The, the clarifier and the, the clarifiers themselves, well...
Do you want me to walk you through, step you through the process a little bit?
Just tell me what the clarifier does in the process.
Okay, the clarifier itself is a large round circular tank. It's approximately 18 feet deep. What happens is when the flow of water hydrologically comes into that tank...
Sewage.
Well, it depends, there's different clarifiers in different parts of the plant.
The one we're talking about right now.
The one we're talking about right now, that's a secondary clarifier. And that's after, that's after, after activated sludge treatment. Activated sludge treatment are long rectangular tanks that are teeming with microorganisms and they eat the sludge that comes in as the sewage comes into the plant. We, we have to do three things there. We have to aerate it, we have to provide air for the microorganisms so that they can have respiration. The microorganisms have to be able to get in contact with the food itself that's surrounding them so the air continually makes a turbulent environment, so they have the food come to them. And also what we do is between the oxygen, the aeration and the microorganisms, they also replicate, so they continue to grow, the microorganisms do.
So the aerator is part of that process?
Yes, the air comes into the, and through tubes and through pipes into the bottom of the aeration tanks. And that's going to be part of our upgrade also. Right now, we have very outdated tubes that come in that deliver with large holes the air into these tanks. And it blows across the tanks, the tanks are roughly 18 feet wide, 20 feet wide. And it creates a circular motion through the tank. And, but because the orifices are so large, our blowers themselves put out all this, all the energy that it takes to push that air into the tanks is, is very inefficient. Because we want to improve our efficiency and lower the cost of operating the plant, we have two new turbo blowers that will operate on a magnetic, they won't even be on bearings, be operating on a magnetic turbine.
Okay. And the energy source for those things is what, electricity?
Yes, electricity.
Okay.
And...
So you're making an air, you're replacing the current aeration system with an aeration system that's more efficient from an energy standpoint, correct?
Yeah, and, and I'll tell you what else we put in there.
That's not bad for a guy that almost flunked chemistry sophomore year in high school.
The other thing we're putting in, in the bottom of these tanks, instead of having the spargers, which are large pipes with the large holes I was talking to you about, they're going to be discs. And there's going to be a small rubber, about the size of a pipe blade. And each disc is made of a polyethylene plastic, and it has a cover over it with, with, with a rubber membrane. And the, and we have like, in fact, we're figuring there's going to be approximately over 900 per tank of these discs in the bottom of these tanks. And so when the air is turned on, it's going to fill up those pipes. They're going to raise the, the membrane like a dome, small little mini domes across the bottom of the aeration tank. And the air will come out of those membranes and fine little bubbles, fine little bubbles. Now we have multiple millions of fine little bubbles of air mixing with the activism, activated sludge, microorganisms, and that'll lower the cost of the air coming through those large holes that's just blasting out there very inefficiently.
Okay, I'm, I'm with you. Okay, so now tell me what a clarifier does.
The clarifier, what will happen in the clarifier? Once the activated sludge leaves the last tank in the activated sludge system, it goes into a series of clarifiers. We have three that are already there, and we're building the two new ones you see here. And what that does is hydraulically goes into the center of the tank and it overflows as a mushroom would, 360, and it's, and it's, it's slowed down. The velocity slows down to where everything now is slow and it's just settling to the bottom of the tank. So the whole idea behind a clarifier is to remove the solids that are in the activated sludge, because if you looked at the activated sludge, it'd be...
I don't need, I don't need to look at it.
It'd be brown like Willy Wonka's Chocolate Factory, let's put it that way.
Thanks, thanks for that visual. When I wake up at 1:00 tomorrow morning, that's what I'll be thinking.
So it'll settle in the clarifiers, and you'll have a clear, clearer effluent on top. And the sludge settles in the bottom, but you've got to think of one thing here that's really cool. All the microorganisms in the bottom of the tanks are going to be returned to the front end of the activated sludge system so that they can continue to consume the sewage coming into the plant. And of the clear water in the clarifiers, it rises up and overflows the weirs all the way around 360. That is treated now, and it has a small amount of solids in it, it's, it's clear. You can, if you're standing atop, you're looking down on the tank, you can see 10 feet down in the, oh, not 10, at least five feet, seven feet down in the tank with clear water. Then that goes through sand filtration to get the final...
So that additional or more refined clarifying, does that make the stuff cleaner?
Yes. Our sand filtration is the last step. That's the effluent, which is the process water leaving the process, the effluent water goes into sand filtration, goes through sand itself, and then it's discharged into the Red Cedar River. The reason why we're building two new clarifiers though is because the plant itself can't handle all the flows when we get a heavy rain in the spring and so forth.
I get it. I'm, I'm guessing you have never sat for 10 minutes with Ms. Hardy and explained to her that whole thing right there, because she is fascinated by that whole equation.
There you go.
Good job, thank you.
You're welcome.
And by the way, this is a, this is a picture of the aeration that Todd was referring to. That brown water there, George?
I can't, I can't see it from here.
You have that handout, you have that handout. So based on those energy savings, the energy savings of just the aeration upgrades is about $372,000 per year in energy savings. So we are continually to, continuing to look at our energy savings at the plant to be able to install things that are more energy efficient because we use so much electricity to be able to run that key, key piece of, you know, it's not even a piece of equipment, our key plant there. So for this project, it's going to be complete in October 2023. Actually, I think we should, you know, make sure to have, you know, everybody out there to come tour that.
Actually, I want to mention that, actually, that, you know, I got a chance early in my career to do a tour of the facility. The sludge coming in, when it looks like, and then you stand at the end with the final filtration, when it dumps into the river, it looks so crystal clear, you are astounded by the, by the environmental impact of this plant. They really are the unsung heroes of environmental quality and water quality, this plant. So it is a great resource, and I think when this is done, we should get a chance to go out there and take a look at it because they've done some great improvements to it.
The water coming out, the water coming out is cleaner than the water in the Red Cedar River.
It's cleaning the river.
Well, yeah, that's... I've been around here a long time. Yeah, tell me that. Can you give us some idea of what is the gross energy cost per year electrical running the plant?
I think it's a million a year or north of a million a year energy, is that, is that about right?
Approximately $100,000 a month.
Yeah.
All right, so you're cutting this by about...
A third?
A third.
Quarter.
30% per year.
And, and with our last project, which was our digester, we all, we already cut that like $400,000 before.
Per year?
Yes. So we're continually looking at things to be able to reduce that dependency, I should say.
And the electricity we buy from whom?
Board of Water and Light.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so just one other thing, you know, with our plant, you know, this, this wonderful resource that we have. I mean, we've been, we've been continually providing an investment to this facility. You know, in 2015, we started our SRF, State Revolving Loan Funds with our SRF project plan. And, you know, throughout the four projects, so the four projects was the tertiary and UV, the headworks, the digester and solids, and then this one with the clarity, clarification, oh my, clarifier and aeration improvements, $110 million in spending. Obviously, that's not all borne on the city of East Lansing, as I indicated before. We have our shared partnership and agreement with MSU and Meridian Township. But that's a huge investment, and this facility is state of the art. And it's, it's, it's continuing to become that way, so I'm very excited about that.
Quick question about that. So this last time there was a major investment was the 70s primarily. So this is really a 40-year, it's a community improvement for 40 years of service likely, maybe even longer.
Absolutely.
That this will be updated, so it's a great investment by the community.
I had an earlier question. I know other municipalities are concerned as far as with back on the roads part, on gas tax, gas, gas tax capture, electrification, all that kind of thing. What's your projections as far as the impact of high gas prices, utilization? Are, how do you, how are you able to play with that kind of going forward here?
From what I know right now, I mean, we're continuing, you know, with the same, you know, rate that we have been, and that's what we're counting on. So if, if more comes, you know, with higher taxes or something, that's a benefit. You know, we're, we're kind of basing that on, on what we've received in the past.
I do think that as the people transition to electric vehicles in the future, the state will have to come up with a new solution for funding roads because it just, 10 years out, it may not work. But, but that's something that all municipalities will have to keep an eye on and be advocating for to make sure that, you know, that the changeover is not, you know, doesn't result in roads that aren't serviceable. But obviously for us, we've benefited, and I think you saw the number of about 700,000 a year that's coming from our income tax each year over this 12-year period to really supplement the roads.
Yeah, I did forget to, to mention that, but yeah, the income tax funnels into our local street fund.
I think you did, you mentioned it.
Oh, good.
Yeah. No, I just, that's in the back of my mind, just so much going on with fuel costs and X. I don't know which way that's going to go, so.
Questions?
I don't have a question, but I, I did want to say that I had a chance to tour the plant in 2017, and I am absolutely in the front row and center to tour the new one when it's done. I didn't realize how fascinated I was by sewage until I spent a couple hours walking through our treatment facility, so.
It is fascinating.
I'm, I'm there, and I'm going to bring Mr. Burke over with me.
Please do.
He's, he's more enthusiastic than he's letting on.
You can try.
I think also the astounding thing about those upgrades, it's been a generational improvement in the facility, is that they've kept the facility operating the entire time while they're taking sections offline, doing a two-year project and then getting it back online, and the plant just keeps working all of these seven years uninterrupted. I mean, they've done, it's an astounding job to keep the plant, this critical infrastructure running during the, during the, like I said, a generational improvement, so kudos to them for a great job.
I guess long-term, by next budget, if, with the budget delays and the supply side thing sounds really concerning with that part of it. If there's a need to update us or something occurs, I'd be interested to hear about that because I think that's going to be an ongoing challenge for quite a while.
It will be an ongoing challenge, and yeah, to be able to push things forward with, you know, design and getting things out to bid first, or bid sooner. you know, design, getting things out to bid first or bid sooner, get your projects in first, and maybe you can have a better chance. But at some point, something has to give with the supply, especially for the water main. Everybody is, everybody is dealing with it at this point, and, I mean, I put six to eight months, you know, when I was talking, you know, thinking about the presentation, and I've heard a year in some other cases, but the last I heard was six to eight months. And it's sad to say that, hey, that's great, because it's not.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
More questions?
Yeah, some questions. Most of my questions are around the water bill and residents, but my first question that wasn't about that was, how long did you say you guys were looking for a master electrician?
Five years.
And so do you, what do you do? What have you done in the meantime?
We have a as-needed electrical contractor that helps us out.
And do you guys think about a, you know, a time to kind of maybe give up trying to find a?
Always, yeah. I mean, that, that was the pinch point, to be able to get the as-needed contractor, because we're just not finding them, and they, you know, people aren't coming here for the price point that we have.
Yeah. All right, so the water bill chart, when you, when we get the water bills, residents or businesses, is it able to be divided by residential or businesses that pay water? Like, can a report, you know, can something be pulled where you see what businesses are paying for water, and then you also see separately?
I would say, I think so. Perhaps. How do you like that answer?
Do you mean in aggregate, like what the system is, how much of the system is supported by businesses, by commercial, and how much is supported by residential, like, like the whole business?
Yeah, and, and, yes. And my curiosity, one of them was, like, during COVID times, did it flip? And did we see it tilt more towards residents were paying more money, because they were home, and businesses were paying less money?
I think the one area that might, I'm not sure how, like apartments and those types of properties, I suppose, are classified, but I do believe we classify residential, we might even have duplexes. So there is a category, so I guess we could look to see if there's a report we can run that would give a summation over the last five years or four years or something.
I was, it was, this is all more going towards, the chart on monthly amounts and five thousand gallons is hard for me to wrap my head around. Like, I know what I pay quarterly for my water bill, and I also know that people talk about water rates are really increasing for folks, and so, and you mentioned your stats and that maybe they're accurate for the city of East Lansing rates, but maybe they're not accurate, and so I'm curious what your average such-and-such is paying, what percentage of people are paying this amount or that amount? And, and I would prefer seeing it like on a quarterly basis, because that's how I understand my bill. And, and so is that?
I think on this table, right, it shows, I can't see those numbers, six thousand, six thousand, twelve thousand, fifteen thousand, and eighteen thousand gallons, and that is on a quarterly basis.
And what page is that again?
What slide?
That was slide thirteen.
It's the next slide after.
So that shows the quarterly rate, well, the quarterly bill calculation, if, depending of what your usage is.
Page thirteen.
And we believe that fifteen thousand gallons is the average.
Typical residential, a typical single-family home would be fifteen thousand.
Okay, so that's, oh, that's the page that's up right now, huh?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's a two hundred and sixty, at the bottom, the two hundred and sixty-nine, two hundred and seventy dollars per quarter would be the average for a family that's using fifteen thousand gallons.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that.
So with rising water rates and with our control over our water bills, any thoughts on posting things on the water bills about how people can save on their water? And so also where I'm going with this is, consumers' energy is doing an amazing job, like sending out my whole, what I've been doing in my home, and their suggestions on, you know, what I could do differently to lower my bill. And so I'm wondering, because water rates are increasing for people, and maybe people are lost about like how to figure stuff out, if it's ever been discussed to kind of add something to the water bill to let people know.
Like a conservation type tips?
Yeah, water efficiency and stuff. I, I mean, we, we do, I put in our water bill inserts and stuff, so that was something that we could add as an article, definitely.
Okay, so I was just curious about that, and someone had mentioned before about the connection of the landlords to the water bills, and, and that if the renters don't pay, it goes to the owner of the property, and it's added to their property taxes.
That's true.
Any thoughts on changes on that, just because, you know, I mean, we get our money, but it doesn't hold the right people accountable.
Well, I think typically, doesn't it go to the rent, the last, the lease typically has where if they leave without paying, that it comes out of a deposit so that the landlord is not?
Certain landlords do utilize a deposit system, so they require their tenants to provide a deposit with the city of East Lansing, which should cover any final bill or past due amount. So when that tenant moves out, we withhold that from the deposit and then refund the remaining amount, just like a security deposit.
Okay.
But not all landlords do that. But I think it's an ordinance that dictates that past due water bills stay with the property and shall be added to the next regular property tax bill, July's property tax bill.
Thank you. That's all my questions, and thanks for your colorful PowerPoint presentation.
You're welcome.
More questions? I have, I have an old question since you're here, maybe it's a Jill question. We, we were having conversations kind of in the heart of the pandemic around people being behind on bills and that kind of whole thing was going on in there. I didn't know if we ever came back around to how people were coming into, you know, right standing and what with the water bills and utilities in general.
I haven't looked at that in detail recently. I believe that my treasurer would let me know if she was seeing a trend of a significant amount of past due, so I guess my gut is, is that it's returned to a more normal amount, but I can definitely follow up on that.
Yeah, can, can we have that some, stuck somewhere?
Yep, for sure.
Thank you.
Just a quick, so thank you to Nicole and to Tom for their presentations and Jill. So tonight, we have the public hearing for the budget, that's the one public hearing during the regular meeting, and then this is our fourth work session for the budget that we're at the completion of. We have one more remaining next week, which will be for the Parks and Recreation Fund as well as Park CIP, Parks Capital Improvement, and that completes the pre-planned presentation. So if there's any other information, obviously, council wants, besides the questions, we'll continue to get the questions, and then obviously leading to an approved budget two weeks from tonight on the twenty-fourth, hopefully. So with that, obviously, we can answer any questions the council may have about any portion of the budget.
I have a question. So when should we start making suggestions or motions on amendments to the budget?
So the sooner the better, so that we know, and we can put it together, you know, depending on the scope of it, depending on how we're gonna try to balance that and get it as prepared a budget as possible. I would say that tomorrow, next week would be better than, than the week we're approving the budget, would be, is that a fair statement?
Yes, it's always easier to kind of do those changes in advance, so that when you have the resolution in front of you, it's the right numbers. Otherwise, we'll have to try to say, you know, we're gonna pass the resolution with these edits.
Yeah.
So that makes me a little nervous to make sure we catch all the pieces.
Okay. I had asked a budgeting question about parental leave, and it was mentioned that it happens during negotiation, and I know in my research that sometimes city council members have brought it forward as something to talk about, but my question during budgeting sessions was, is, I'm, I'm curious how it would impact the budget and then to just, and I'm still hoping for that answer, instead of the, you know, that possibly the unions can negotiate that.
Yep, we can, we can figure out some reasonable estimate, I mean, about what the amount would be and how many people use parental leave and come up with some reasonable estimates for you.
I think we can come up with an amount of, based on who takes FMLA, right, for parental leave?
For adoption, for birth, and then, and then just make some assumptions about the number per year and how much you would be.
I think the difficulty is, right, if it's, if they don't have to use their own time and count on as FMLA and use their own accruals, you would probably see an increase in the number of people taking that time, because I'm gonna guess there's some people who have had children that have not taken a full twelve weeks or have taken zero amount of days off. So I think there could be, I think it will be difficult to come up with the exact amount for that reason, so I think that was just something to keep in consideration.
Yeah, and I always talk about, sometimes when we say we're in support of families, just kind of seeing it, you know, in our books too. And yeah, I, my first born, I took six weeks off, and that's because I did not have paid time, and I needed to return to work to pay my bills. And so it makes sense that it would increase, it definitely does, and as a group that supports families and connections, I, you know, definitely am curious about what it looks like for the budget.
And we can also look to see how many people have leave, I mean, because we have a, we have a, I'd say a family-friendly and rather generous leave bank for all of our groups, whether, what, non-union, different units, so I think people generally have a generous leave bank policy throughout the city, but I can also see how many people have gone without pay or have had to come back before twelve weeks and see what the impact has been.
Yeah, that's a good idea, yeah.
Are there questions or comments? Any communication from the audience? None seen, meeting adjourned?